Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to start on our city session with a presentation from executive director of Tree Beth Dykman and Director Secondary Sue Shollin and Assistant Superintendent Kelly Dent.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dent and Board of Directors for having us here this evening. And we also have another guest with us. This is Leanne Lockman. She's our lap title specialist and so she'll be joining us in the presentation in just a few moments. So as you can see, we're here tonight to talk about our intervention programs, which are part of our goal one and goal three of the strategic plan. So just a reminder, goal one, our measurement for success is that by 2026, we want all of our third graders to be meeting or exceeding grade level standards in both ELA and in mathematics. And then for goal three, it's a parallel goals. It's the same exact thing for our fifth and eighth graders. So again, we want it by 2026 that our students are meeting or exceeding standards in ELA and mathematics on the smarter balanced assessment. So for equity, remember, goal one is really about success in the early years. So this is around when our elementary students are coming in. How are we making sure that they have that access, the opportunities? So that they're successful in academics and social emotional learning. And so then as they matriculate up in grade levels, we get to goal three. And it's really making sure that every student has access to their grade level standards, a rigorous curriculum, as well as having that high quality instruction. Then there is no shortage of work policies, as you know, that support academics. I think the entire 2000 series pretty much sums up the work that we do. So we just highlighted a few things that were really, you know, honed in on our heart around the work that we do. I can't under emphasize the importance of school improvement plans, the work we do around designing our courses, the selection of our materials. And then really what's important is doing our program evaluations of making sure the things that we're doing are actually getting results. And if they're not, are we doing the things that we need to do to change that? So this slide right here tells you some approximate costs to, and this is just when you just hone in on intervention programs. So on the left, you'll see a table there. And the first three items are curriculum that we use and I'm not 95% looks weird, but that is actually the name of a curriculum resource that we use. That shows you the cost per year of the materials. The last one in the column, we use some educators that help us with doing some assessment work three times a year. So we pay some extra stipend for that. And then over on the right hand side, this is staffing that's allocated in the staffing, in the staffing cycle that principals know at the beginning of the year that they'll have to build out intervention programs. So at the elementary level, I think all of you are aware of that we have win groups or what I need groups. And so we have one of those for classroom and there's parent educators that support that. And then we also have a full time intervention specialist at each one of the elementaries. Then at middle school, it's a little bit different. So we have 10 sections at each school. There's a four and sixth grade. So there's two sections for math, two sections for English language arts, same thing for seventh grade, two and two. And then eighth grade, we have one for math and one for ELA. So for each one of those sections, there's a teacher and then a parent educator in there that's supporting the small group work. Then in the presentation, our outcomes, when you think about intervention, it's really about our promise and action. And it's how are we knowing, valuing and supporting the students that we know are not reaching that goal that we have at 80%, right? It's like, how are we eliminating those disproportionality that we see? So the structure of the presentation, I mean, you've seen it before. We really go through the four PLC questions, asking ourselves the same questions that we want our educators to be using, you know, on those Monday mornings. And then in our strategic plan, we have our four pillars. So we'll do, I'll do a little bit of highlighting of those pillars in just a moment, but what I want you to kind of be thinking about is where are you seeing that as we're going through the presentation? Because addressing all of those pillars is is important to make sure that we get the results that we want to for students. And then as board members and our superintendent, we always think about what is it that we want you to be able to do once you walk out of the door here. So when you're in the grocery store, a neighbor, a community member is asking you about, hey, what is intervention? We're hoping that when you walk out of here today, that you at least have a basic understanding where you can talk about, well, what does the structure of intervention look like? But then more importantly, that second piece there is really about what is it doing for our students, right? What does it look like for them? How are we using what they need to design the supports so that they are making academic progress? So this is the page out of our strategic plan. This is the goal one. The educational strategies and it's hard just to kind of look at it in pinpoint, well, what four things do I want you to kind of look at under each column? So again, I want to just kind of highlight this a little bit and then have you watch for it during the presentation. So under teaching and learning, like we have to target on best practices for literacy and numeracy. Like it's just like, we have to hone in and do the things that are going to make the most difference for our students. Again, under pillar B, it has to be done in an inclusive classroom environment where students feel like they belong, that they're cared for, that they feel like, you know, we know and value who they are as a person. Column C and D really kind of go together. It's about using data. We shouldn't be guessing on where students are. It's like, how are we using that data? Using a cycle of inquiry and then acting upon what that data is. And then goal three, even though this is goal three, and you might be thinking, well, goal three is, you know, grades five and eight. It's really not the strategy that you see here apply equally to goal one. This applies to all students across the board. Pillar one and or pillar A and C, I would say it's about making sure that every student has access to that core curriculum, grade level standards. It shouldn't matter whether that student is receiving special education services if they're learning English for the first time. And then along with that, under pillar C, are our teachers getting the professional learning so that they are using the highest leverage instructional strategies that we know make the biggest difference for them in their learning? And then pillar B, if we don't have parents and we're not communicating with them, like we're not, they're important stakeholders. They are just a part of this work as as anyone else is. And the last one, our system of assessments, you're going to hear about that in a few slides, and that's an area that we're working on right now as we kind of leveraged up as an area of importance for us.
Okay, thank you. So a little bit background information, I just want to highlight this page. I was over at the Early Learning Center and I asked kids, tell me what you look like when you're thinking. And so we of course love the third one over, and I had a ton more that I could have put in there. I love those little kind of burners, but that's their thinking face. You remember at last month's board meeting, study session, Lori shared with you this information. And so while we have some great highlights here, some great results with regards to meeting some of our goals in the strategic plan or being on target. Tonight, our focus really is on the gap. So at the top, you'll see, you know, our first goal, success in the early years, the 80 by 2026, 80% of our third grade students meeting or exceeding grade level standards. And as you can see, that our goal for the 2023 school year in third grade was 63.7. We attained that surpassed that at a 67.1. But as you look down that gap, 12.9%, we still to get to that 80%, we need 97 out of that 598. Those are the kids that we really need to make sure that we're focusing on for that 80%. The same for math, the 60%, 71.3. Again, great. We're excited and we celebrate that. But tonight we're focused in on that gap of 9.6 or the the number of 73. Likewise, with our goal three with fifth grade SBA results, you can see again, we met, but we have an 8.7% gap to get to that 80%. And then in math, the 22.7%, again, 64 and then 169 kids. We did not meet in in math. And again, intervention, that's what we'll be talking about tonight. How are we closing that gap?
So eighth grade is just carrying on the same story that that explained, you know, we've got incrementally benchmark from the 2023 results to the 80% in 2026. For our eighth graders, similar to what you heard with elementary in ELA. You know, in terms of the benchmark, we've got the cohort, we had that cohort on progress towards the 80%, but in the area of math, we were just short of it. And and again, looking at the gap, we know that in both cases, you know, we've got a lot of students that just are not demonstrating proficiency as far as at the eighth grade level. So we've got some work ahead of us still.
If we were sitting in our PLC right now, the very first question we've been asked ourselves is what do we need to know and be able to do? So looking at that data is important, right? We need to know what our starting place is. And so in any school system, you've heard multi-tier systems of support. So we really need to look at that tier one. This is our best level of defense right here. That first instruction in the classroom is the most important instruction that we can provide. So again, go back to that pillar, what I said, it's about, you know, you having the best curriculum in our classrooms and having our teachers trained on high leverage instructional strategies. And if we, if we're doing well there, we should be at 80%. But we know that that won't be sufficient for every single student. So that's where tier two comes in. So tier two was really for some students. What you need to think about this is more of a rapid type of intervention. How can we catch a student quickly with a small gap and then fill it? And then you'll see examples of this at elementary with wind time as well as your board visit tomorrow. And then the highest level tier three, to think about, these might be bigger gaps for when it take a longer period of time, very much more at an individualized state. Some people think about tier three as being designated like for students receiving special services, but that is not true. Any student can be at tier three. You can just think in your mind around students who may, you know, may have experienced homelessness, who've been out of school for a long time. There could be lots and lots of gaps. So in this system, though, it's important to remember, like, we have to base this on data. Again, think back when I just talked about the pillars. We have to use data to move kids in and out of groups, knowing whether or not they are achieving, they're not, and where at. And then in our intervention systems, it's like no one class looks the same. So when we talk about building a system, we have all different kinds of students with different needs and how are we designing a system to address all of those? There's just four examples up here on the screen, but I want you to think about the magnitude of this. Students who who have this need may come from a low income background, who didn't have that preschool experience that we talked about in the last study session. What does that look like for that learner coming in? What about our multilingual learners? What they need is going to be drastically different. So how are we supporting, you know, vocabulary, language acquisition? We could have students who are receiving special education services. Think about a student who may have services in reading, but that reading is impacting their ability to learn mathematics. We could have a student who isn't labeled with anything like that. So that is like the puzzle pieces that we're trying to to put together. In every, I think about school as every day, every hour, every minute matters for these students. We don't get a second, second grade or a third, second grade or a fourth, second grade. So how? When we think about it, how was what we're doing in those intervention classes? How was it evidence based? We don't want to, we have a picture up there about, we don't want to guess. We don't want to speculate or wonder what's going to work. We don't want to do that. Every minute matters. So what we do as a team and as a department is we really use the research out there to make the best decisions possible. So we get resources, OSPI puts out what are called menus of best practices. They have them for both English language arts and mathematics. So we scour those things to see like, what is the best curriculum that has evidence? What are, you know, different programmatic pieces that we can put into into place? The Department of Education also has what's called what works clearinghouse. Again, it's just, this is a sample of places where we go. So we're taking the guesswork out of trying to figure out what will work. We want to know what works ahead of time. Students should not be, I want to say like guinea pigs and, you know, testing out, you know, what may be a good strategy or not a good strategy.
Where are we at with interventions right now? Some of you might remember last year, you saw this in the study session that we did on goal one and goal two, I mean, goal three. And right in the middle of that Venn diagram is where we have the similarities between elementary and secondary in our intervention system. So acclimating this, looking at qualification for elementary, we have qualifications, students performing at the 10th percentile or shown by the diagnostic data. Whereas secondary is looking at specifically at one to two years or three plus grade levels behind. So if you go down, you can see that we have a lot of similarities, the three times per year with diagnostics. We each have research-based supplemental curriculum, different at each level for appropriately, as Kelly just shared, looking at research. In elementary, we have the opportunity to use some flexible groups. At secondary, they're static groups. Again, by virtue of the way that the system is, that's why we have the differences there. One to one per class for kindergarten through first grade with para support, one to one.
Minus one.
Thank you. Minus one per class for second, fifth and para. They have para support in the intervention classes in secondary. Tosis, we have a tosis at the elementary and secondary that are focused on intervention and lap support. And then of course, our data from the PLC team and the teachers and admin. So that goes across the board for both elementary and secondary, actually. So these are the things, you know, these, this is our system. However, some of the points with regards to our intervention instruction that I want to point out. So Kelly talked about our intervention system was built on research. What you see here refers to somebody called John Hattie and his research that he did with visible learning. So John Hattie did over 25 years of examining and synthesizing over 2,100 meta-analysis comprising more than 132,000 studies involving over 300 million students around the world. And what he was trying to figure out was which variables were the most important and the most effective for our students. What he found is there was what he calls the hinge point. Anything that has an effect size of over a point four is your zone of desired effects. So when you look at things like we have a small group format for our intervention, that has a hinge point or an effect size of point four seven. As you go down the instruction and curriculum based on the science of reading, using phonics to guide, that's a point seven. Providing scaffolding, I do, we do, you do, point eight two. So you can see that this is something that we pay very close attention to. Later on, when we, you get the opportunity to see the SIPs, you're going to see some of this as well. Because what we're looking for is the highest effect for our students to be successful. What we do in elementary is a walk to win. This is our RTI, which by the way, RTI, response to intervention has an effect size of a 1.29. I mean, that's huge. So this is a sample of what an elementary, a typical elementary, one grade level would look like. So you take four classrooms, roughly 75 students. You have seven staff members between the classroom teachers, the paras. If you look at the, to the far left, that is our intervention group, our lowest performing group. You would have a learning specialist and then potentially the intervention teacher, teaching those small groups of kids. Three students in one, two students in another. Again, the smaller the group, the better for those kids. It's very intensive intervention. Moving to the next group over, where you would have roughly five students in a classroom with a classroom teacher. Why? When you look at that, you go back to the Hattie research, what you're going to see is that the effect size of having the most qualified instructor working with your lowest performing kids. I thought I'd add that in here, but I don't have the effect size in there. But that is where you want to have. You know, things like our qualified instructors have more training. They have management skills. They have the ability to make those instructional decisions as they're working with the group, ability to gather data while doing that. It's not that our paraprofessionals aren't trained. It's not that they don't have the skills to do that. But what we want is we want the most qualified, the most trained teachers with the lowest performing students. And then we also add that training that we'll, we'll talk about later, sorry, with our paraprofessionals that kind of jump around. But you'll see as we move up, 12 students in a higher group and then the moving to the above levels for the benchmarked on grade level groups. So it's just a kind of a big picture of an elementary. And there you go.
At the middle school, and Beth touched on this just briefly a moment ago, but so the flexibility that you saw in the middle school or the elementary scheduling gets a little less. And it's due to the nature of a master schedule. And so Kelly shared in the resources slide about staffing. So staffing provides four sections of intervention at sixth and seventh grade and two sections at eighth grade. What the schedule right here illustrates for you, you know, if you went through the top rows, you see the schedule for a sixth grade student has students in core classes, the first four periods of the day. And those last two periods, fifth and sixth are what we call encore classes. So that's kind of your elective classes. And it's during those, that band of the day that the sixth graders would take an intervention class if they were scheduled to do so. And then you flip down the next section, you can see that the seventh graders have encore the first two periods. So the intervention classes are built into those periods. And then the eighth grade have their intervention in the middle day, kind of straddling around lunch. And so again, the intervention classes are built into that part of the day. Something that I think you've seen this before. I've done a couple of presentations on the intervention programs before. On the left, the graphic that you see there is a system 44, which is our tier three ELA curriculum. And that is what we're actually going to see tomorrow when we visit Mountain View. This illustration just gives you a quick look at the structure of what the students go through on daily basis. They come in, they have a brief introduction. And then either the students are engaged in a small group instruction that's led by either the certificate teacher or the parent educator, or the students are engaging in the computer adaptive software. And and then they flip flop. So each day, that's the rotation that they would experience. In a read one eighty or an I ready, a tier two class, the difference that you see here, you see the whole group at the beginning and the end. But really the bigger piece here is you see independent practice time for the students, which students don't really engage in in the tier three, but in the tier two, they bring that into the processes that the students do do some independent reading or writing or responding to some, some work that they've been doing in the class. So the work, the work that we do, the work that we're continuing to do to improve the programs and services has many, many parts to it. One, one thing, one of the first things that we wanted to focus on is is building the collective efficacy. A moment ago, Beth was talking about the effect size from Patty's research. She said how RTI had an effect size of 1.29. You'll notice here that collective efficacy, which is a group sharing a belief that they can together truly make an impact through, you know, through strategies, through study of data. But collectively, they have that belief. The effect size here is a 1.34, even greater. And so whether it's through the root work that teachers are doing during their PLC time or, you know, through structures that allow schools to have leaders and teams that come together and look at the data, make, you know, plans and revisions, plans for the students. We're building that collective efficacy. This has also been a focus as we've done our grade band meetings with our administrators of, you know, talking about this collect efficacy, not just within a building, but across our elementary schools, across our middle and our high schools, you know, sharing kind of that belief and that work in each other and really getting the work that's necessary done. So our next thing was, and it's, we need to make sure that we've got the right programs and curriculum and resources in the hands of our teachers and the training that they need. You know, to implement everything properly. You see on the left there 95%, which was the elementary program that Beth spoke about. And then you got system 44 in the middle and read one eighty on the right. We invest a lot of time and into the professional development and development of the, you know, teacher skill. We literally, I think just last week, got done with our second round of meeting with teachers and admin to look at the results from the first round of our inventories or assessments. And and it's, it's about the data, but it's also then about what's next. What are the next moves that we need to make within those classes? And how to maximize the potential of the programs? So again, tomorrow, we have a visit to a classroom at Mountain View and we're going to go into a seventh grade, tier three ELA classroom. And you're going to see some students that are going to be working independently on their Chromebooks. So they're going to be engaging in the the software. But you're also going to see both a teacher and a parent educator having small groups of students that they're going to be working with. One group is going to be working on five phonograms, vowel consonant combinations that make that R sound. So you're going to, they're going to be working on things where students, you know, they see, I mean, what a wonderful language we have in English, right? But it's like, we've got E R, I R, U R, O R, E A R, but they are, and they all can make the same sound. So working on that particular skill, another group is going to be working with syllable separation and allowing kids to see how the vowel functions between sounds in the syllable. And so like, like we said before, this, this tier three is really getting down to some real, you know, basic skills students have to develop as they progress, you know, as as readers and their literacy. I just have to say, I mean, like the availability, you see it here, but of kids having the one to one Chromebooks, the the headsets with the microphones and everything else. It is just such a game changer in terms of leveling the field, removing barriers and for these kids as they, you know, engage in just this one class throughout their day.
So we'll also see elementary tomorrow and what you're going to see, and you're going to experience a little bit tonight, but you're going to see a small group of students with this one instructor tomorrow, the intervention teacher tomorrow. The focus of the group is going to be phonics and phonological awareness. And the goal of the lesson is to learn the syllable type and apply that understanding to reading. There will be a lot of student interaction. And so this evening, Leanne Lockman is going to take you through a very quick lesson on 95%.
In your package, you'll have the materials that we used for the lesson today. You'll have some tips and you'll have a net. And you also have a copy of the lesson. This is from 95%'s basic chip kit. The focus is foundational skills. Typically, we would use this kit with first, first grade, possibly some second graders. And these are the basic foundational skills. When with this is over, I'll need to have my chips back because I need these for kids. The lesson, if you would like to see more of what this lesson has to offer. These typically take about 15 minutes, but we're only going to spend less than 10 today. Okay, so, so today we're focusing on the first long vowel pattern, which is the long vowel silent A pattern. If I were doing this in the classroom, these students would have already learned the first syllable type, which is a closed syllable, which is how we identify a short vowel sound in a word. Words that follow this pattern, the long vowel A silent E pattern are pronounced with the long vowel A sound. So I'm going to use these chips today to represent the sounds. I'll use a blue chip to represent a consonant. I'll use a red chip to represent a short vowel sound. I'll use a green chip to represent a long vowel sound and I'll use an orange chip to represent a digraph. And then we'll talk about this fun spelling chip a little bit later. So watch me, my turn. This is part of that scaffolding where I have a turn and you all get to see, and then you'll have a chance in a minute, but I know it's really tempting to want to touch the pieces. So the word is made. I'll finger stretch the word made. There are three sounds. Watch me pull down the chips to make this word. I'll pull down a blue chip for a green chip for A and a blue chip for A. The pattern is blue, green, blue. Made follows the long vowel silent E pattern because the vowel is pronounced with its long vowel sound followed by one consonant. The pattern is one long vowel sound A followed by one consonant. Let's do some together. Okay, here we go. Here we go. The word is vein. What's the word? Vein. Let's finger stretch the word vein. Ready, go. There is one long vowel sound A followed by one consonant. Let's pull down some chips. We'll pull down a blue chip for a green chip for A and a blue chip for say the sounds with me. Ready, go. The pattern, say that with me. Blue, green, blue. Vein follows the long vowel silent E pattern because the vowel is pronounced with its long vowel sound and is followed by one consonant. The pattern is one long vowel sound. The pattern is one long vowel sound, A, followed by one consonant. Let's try one that doesn't follow this pattern. Okay, the word is van. What's the word? Van. Finger stretch fan with me. Ready, go. Ah hmm. The vowel is short. So let's pull down some chips to represent this word. We'll pull down a blue chip for hmm. A red chip for ah, and a blue chip for hmm. Say these sounds with me. Ready, go. Ah hmm. And the pattern, ready, go. Blue, red, blue. Van does not follow the long A silent E pattern because the vowel is pronounced with its short vowel sound. All right, my turn. Let's try some with the spelling. Watch me, my turn. The word is shape. I'll build this word and then I will, with the sound chips, and then I will change it to the spelling chip. The word is shape. I'll finger stretch shape. Shh. A. There are three sounds. Watch me pull down the chips. I'll pull down an orange chip for shh, a green chip for A, and a blue chip for shh, A. I'm gonna replace my green sound chip with my green spelling chip. The long A silent E pattern is spelled with a letter A, followed by a consonant and a silent E at the end. Notice that the E does not have its own box. And that is because it is not pronounced. Only sounds that are pronounced get their own box. I'm going to write this word. So I have three sounds. I will draw a line around three boxes. The sound uh, for my orange chip is. The sound for my green chip is A, and my last sound is. And I'll write my silent E in the bottom because it does not make a sound, so it shares that box with the key. So try one with me. Alrighty, I didn't bring myself an eraser. Okay, that's okay. Oh, I got it. I'm good. Thank you, though. Okay, so let's try one together. The word is rake. What's the word? Rake. Let's finger stretch rake. Ready, go. Er, A. There are three sounds. Let's pull down some sounds to make this word. We'll pull down a blue chip for er. A green chip for, thank you, A, and a blue chip for. Say the sounds with me. Er, A. Let's trade out that green sound chip for this green spelling chip. Notice that the E is not in its own box because it's not making a sound. I'll touch, turn it this way so you can see it. I'll touch the A and the E with this V shape. This is the signal for long vowel silent E. So when we're working with students, that we use this multi-sensory tactic to help them remember. And that's why everything has its own color. It's another multi-sensory component. Okay, um. The, uh, let's spell this one. So move your chips up. We have three sounds. Draw box or a line around those three boxes. With students, we do dots because everyone is a Picasso and this takes forever to do, so we just do dots. Alright, so the first sound in the first box is er, I'm gonna try my upside down writing, and the next sound is. A, that's terrible. And the last sound is with the silent E in the bottom. Because silent E does not have, have a sound. The, the pattern is long A is one vowel, long vowel sound A followed by one consonant. Silent, or silent E pattern. So now when you're reading words with an A followed by one consonant and a silent E. You will know the vowel sound is long and this will help you read words that you don't know. That is the beginning part of what we.
Thank you, Leanne. Thank you for participating. We'll go again when we're done and um, ninety-five percent, we've done a lot of training and um. I don't have the expertise at this point, so to do that, since the law. Um, so tomorrow you'll get to see that. Um, so um, again, how are we going to get there with these students? Well, we talked about our intervention system, our plan for supporting our students. However, it's bigger than just an intervention block, right? It is um, all of these things, the entirety of our work. The monthly data meetings that we have where we're looking at the kids' progress in core classrooms to determine what else they might need. Provide, what else we might need to provide to our teachers. So both Steve and I have monthly data meetings with our. Our principals and really honing in on specifics with our data. We have our school improvement plans. We have uh, our P L Cs, our Thursday grade band meetings when we're meeting once a month with our principals. Evidence-based curriculum. All of these things come together, um, all of these pieces to create um. Um, this, because we have a, it's a puzzle and it's um, ever growing and ever working with that puzzle to uh, figure out what we can do for our students. One piece of our puzzle is our parent force. It is so important for us. To have successful family involvement and it means that we need meaningful collaboration. And these are just two small examples. So uh, Crestwood had a parent night. Leanne, do you mind talking real quick about that one?
Sure. So first, um, as a, as a part of being a title school, we invite families in. To talk about what title means at their school and then to also get some input on how families would like to see some of the resources used. To support um, the students in their buildings. So Crestwood had a night and they um, presented the information and then parents were given some opportunities to decide. Where they would like to see the resources used at Crestwood. So these are the categories that they were um, interested in. Right. Steve, you wanna talk about Lakewood, what they did there?
Sure. So last spring, um, I think you all know that in May, we do our um, our new hawk night, new bobcat, new wolf night. So. Uh, so as we're heading into May, um, I had to hand it to the Lakewood team. They reached out to all the families of uh, incoming sixth graders. Who have students who um, have I E Ps and invited them as a part of the night to um, engage in. Really simpler, similar to the empathy interviews that we did uh, when we were working on the US history curriculum adoption. But um, we had a team of staff between central office and Lakewood. Uh, that uh, met with the families and uh, just engaged in the conversation, gave them an opportunity. Tell us about your child. Tell us about what helps and uh, makes, you know, conditions for your child to, you know, learn their best. What are, what are your hopes for your child as they're going into uh, to middle school and 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 such? And um, and really made it about like, an opportunity for them to give us input that then we could use to um. You know, kind of refine our programs and what we do to best meet the needs of our students. So um. It was a really cool opportunity and uh, what you see there, just like kind of a sample of like, um, at the very end. All the families had a chance to uh, on a hawk cut out, uh, just note some things about their child, some hopes or wishes for their child. It's great.
So we know we won't get there without the support of our parents. Um, and uh, we know that this is an ongoing continuous improvement cycle. So the idea of the planned do study app. Um, so beginning with that, identifying the root cause and designing our action plans. Um, implementing our action plans, progress monitoring, collecting that data. Identifying lessons learned, analyzing that data, and then abandon, adjust, or adopt the change. But it's just an ongoing process for us. Wash, rinse, repeat. Um, we know. Um, you know, it is critical for us. If we wait for students to fail, they will. So we can't wait until spring to determine that, oh my gosh, you know, this kid needs this, that kid needs. That is that ongoing continuous cycle of looking at the data. We talk about six-week cycles of looking at what we need to do um, for our students. Whether it's elementary or secondary, we are looking at the data constantly adjusting and trying to meet the needs of our individual students.
Yeah, it's one. Uh, so I think that on this one, I guess, it's pretty exciting. Um, you know, I think uh, Laurie spoke about uh, how, you know, this year we're, we're getting off to a great start. And uh, you know, when I look at this, it just reminds me of the work that is really, you know, starting to take off again. Um, some things that we were doing, you know, pre-COVID. That um, finally, we're getting, getting back into our stride and seeing happen. Just yesterday, we had a high school. Um, data meeting and the teams were focused on their gap analysis, the work that they've done around the needs, you know, the needs assessments that. Guiding um, how they're developing their school improvement plans. Um, the teams um, on both sides, always upstairs that are working on, you know, refining curriculum. You know, making sure that the professional development is happening. Um, we started the year off right away to make sure we've got systems in place where we're um, going to be. Monitoring grades and other um, data to ensure that, you know, we're constantly taking, you know, kind of a, a pulse on how things are going. So um, just kind of seeing the different systems coming together and um, and and happening. Um, it's not perfect. We're, we're continuing that continuous improvement cycle. But it's um, it definitely feels like um, things are coming together in a much different, much better way um, this school year.
So I think Steve couldn't have done a better lead. And so one of the things that isn't perfect that we've taken as a, we started as an undertaking for us with last year was. Um, trying to develop a comprehensive assessment system across the district. And really, when we're looking at data, we have to make sure that we have the right data. And that what we're using is seamless from elementary to middle or middle to high school. And so in this plan that we started last year, just, you know, if people aren't familiar with what that is, it's really about us having this complete set of assessments. But it's also about all those stakeholders out there who are using assessments and getting the data. Do they have the best practices around? What does the data mean? Are they testing in the right way? Are they doing at the right time? And the last bullet is the most important one. I remember going to an M T S S conference years ago that says. Don't screen if you're not going to intervene. And that's just it. We should not be assessing students if we are not going to do something for the data. That time would be much more valuable. And teachers actually, you know, providing instruction for kiddos. So um, last year we started this process. We're still, we are in it this year. Um, might seem like a simple thing. It is, it is a pretty complex system and we want to get it right. It's important to our students to get it right. So we have a team assembled of about eighteen people. We have our teachers on special assignment from elementary. And secondary, we have our um, multilingual TOE S A on there. We have building administrators. We have um, representative from elementary, middle, and high school. As well as district admin. I mean, Darla's sitting on there, Beth, Steve, Michelle, and we have special services. So we just, we have a whole team assembled. We meet twice a month and you can see our vision statement up there. It's really like, we want to build a system that is responsive. That we're using the data and that it's helping to derive those instructional decisions in the classroom so that we're getting results for kids. And then we put in this, just hopefully a cute little diagram that if you walk out of here, like, what does that mean? So this is really analogous to you going to a doctor's office and just a quick little temperature check. So if everybody is, has a great temperature, except maybe it's a dev and Dev's running a high temperature. So it's got, it's, it's quick, it's simple. And then it's how do we pull Deb out? So the kiddo you see in there is, is having a more diagnostic test or having their blood sugar tested. So we need to have the right, once we know some, you know, Deb, we have an alert. Sorry, that wasn't my purpose. But like, we need to have the right assessments. Isn't that the student, you know, uh. Can't pronounce a multi-syllabic word. Isn't that they're having trouble with reading comprehension? Like, we have to know like, what it is. And then from that, you see the treatment. Our intervention classes, it is imperative that we have the right curriculum. That our teachers are trained in that curriculum so that we can give the kid that treatment that they need in order to get back on, on track. And every day, every minute matters. So in our team, it's about getting this right and just analyzing the system from every perspective.
So we really do have a lot of things that are going well. Just focus on a couple of things. Um, and uh. So um, right in the middle there, you can see framework development and refinement. And um, I, I have to end the elementary team last school year and into the start of the summer, worked on really getting all their um, frameworks. Uh, developed in that place. And then that really um, you know, just kind of helped. We had already been working last year on a couple of content areas and uh. But it was, it was nice to see those and then the kind of tweak what we were doing based on some great things that we saw in their frameworks. And we've, I, I, I think we've got like six different projects, you know, going right now. Where we're working with, you know, specific content areas and grade levels and uh, finding curriculum and developing the um, the frameworks. This past summer, Suzie Beers Iverson um, was part of a psyop training and we had another team that led the GLAD training for the elementary. And um, we got to be a part of those trainings and, and had lots of staff and administrators as well. Um, we've got our, at the very bottom, we've got the same, you know, Suzie Beers, um, that's leading a P L C with our um, M L to uh, parent educators. Um, to really help develop that work across the schools. Um, and uh, you know, their skills as well.
Clicking.
Yeah, moving.
So opportunities for improvement. Well, we've got a few. Um, you know, determining the number of intervention sections. Um, you know, we need to make sure that we get the data in the right hands quicker. Again, part of our work with um, assessment. Um, we need math intervention. Um, that is huge. I mean, it's important, right? Our kids have to be able to read, do math. Nonetheless, we cannot, um, we have to pay attention to that math. Um, decrease the need for intervention through stronger tier one. I mean, that our core, so every kid gets our core instruction. They don't get pulled out of the core to get the intervention. They get the core plus more. That is what we need for our students, but we need to strengthen that. Because, well, because we need to strengthen that. Um, the data is very clear in that. Um, administrative aims web assessment. Um, we're continuing to. The exciting part about that is uh, we're moving from it being a team, um. A team going out and administering it to actual teachers, but it requires. Um, the training and making sure that they understand what they're doing and then what they're you, doing with the data afterwards. And then that fluid K twelve comprehensive assessment system that um, Kelly talked about that we're working on. Um, those are some of the opportunities working progress.
Oops. Yeah. So we started with our promise and um, we're sort of edging on our promise and I'm hoping that um, through what you've heard tonight. Interventions is really, um, really speaks to the promise, right, of knowing, valuing, and then supporting our students. When we know that there's an area where they need that extra support, because if we don't do that, you know, what are the chances of them crossing that stage? So tonight, a little bit different. Um, you've had an opportunity to hear from us, but that's not how we want it ended. So our last slide is, we want you to actually hear from students. And we've talked about our willingness and hope to take action because we believe us taking an action, building intervention, training our teachers. Is what will bring our students to success. So now we want to end with you hearing the words from them. So thanks, Robin, for hitting our video.
Hi, I'm Shirley and I go to make it while telling them a tale. And I love my reading group because when I'm in there, all my friends help me out when I'm struggling. And I love my reading teacher, Mrs. Arter.
Hi, my name's La'roni. Being a fortunate reader is giving good and having a better heart. And sometimes when people um, don't know how to read, they, I just makes perfect.
Oh, my name is La'Zayn and I love reading. And we're gonna be worried about the Saturday beat.
I'm going from seven words per minute to eighty-four words per minute.
Hello, my name is Spas. First one I came to the book, I couldn't speak English in small groups, help me understand what the fourth man.
Hi, my name is Sydney Kitchell. I've been here since, but you know, have been helping me in the reading and staying in class with less kids, so I did focus.
Have I room, say, my, my group teachers are um, Miss Walter and um, this is Tobin. Because they help me how to read and shout out words to make me get better.
Okay, what can you guys tell me about reading group and what you're working on right now? Read better blend. Can you, like, that? What is the three letter blend?
Hi, I'm Adonis and I'm in grade six and what I want to get better at is the algebra. And what intervention helps me do at and what we focus and read.
My name's Melanie. I was just in and one goal this year at school is to get all eight. And one thing that intervention helps me with is my reading and my reading.
And for my goal for intervention this year is to go like a higher grade for, or not grade, but like class for intervention. And intervention helps me because I was, I was not so good at reading last year and I want to get better at it.
My name is Baysh, I'm in sixth grade and I want to get better at math. And math and reading intervention helps me like read better and learn how to like find evidence in text.
And my name is Yoko, I want to get better at reading and math.
Oh, my name is Ilya and my goal for this year today is to be respectful to the teachers and live.
My name is Urban and I'm a seventh grader. I want to get better at math.
My name is Teresa and I'm in sixth, I'm in sixth grade. I think intervention is good because it can make you read better and faster. It helps with a lot of tests you can do. You go and like college and stuff and it really helps. Also, you need to know that your intervention teacher is trying to help you and use that time wisely because it's intervention, you've got to get serious for that.
So that's the end. So we, again, thank you and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a couple. Um, the question I was going to ask, actually I thought of it earlier. At the elementary level, the specialists for vivid students that are in intervention, do they have the same, whether it's a teacher or care pro, is it the same person all the time?
Not necessarily. So they're very fluid groups. So if we have a student that's in a group and we do a check about every three weeks, if that's not the appropriate placement, we move them.
Okay, all right. The other thing I was going to just comment on is that when my youngest daughter was in elementary school, I hadn't really realized that they need to learn to read before they go into kindergarten. Thought I was a pro at all this. But anyway, so we didn't have anything like this. And I had to pay for a tutor to come and, and work with her. It was only half an hour and, but boy, she really did really well. But what I thought about was all the other students that didn't get, didn't have that opportunity because maybe they didn't have the money or whatever. I felt pretty lucky that we could do what we did, but now she's a ferocious reader. But I just thought that was really sad. It, it wasn't available to everybody. So I'm really happy you guys are doing this. Great.
Yeah, I got a comment. Whenever we, whenever we do these things, whenever we do the thing. The first thing is, and it doesn't matter if it's one kid or three or five or ten. Whenever you guys bring up something like this where, say you have a red, green, deep that your code line type issues. As soon as I see that, they're hooked, ain't doing it. So do you ever run into kids that have that problem? But what do you do to help them? Because they're not going to see like the difference in some of these. So what do you guys do for them?
That's a great question. So I would have known that about my group in the classroom. We use textures. So we would use patterns or something else to represent the symbol.
Because for me it would have to be some type of a pattern. Otherwise, because, so like I would, I was a little third grader.
Right.
And I had to go through all this. When college shut down, we're not going to do it.
Right. And I would have had that information. So whenever, when we're creating these scripts, that visual that Beth gave, that's just kind of like the placemat, right? Here's where everyone's going. But there's more to it. There would be test scores and accommodations and whatever else that a student would need to be successful in a group. Because we want to remove as many barriers as we can. So great question.
That would have been really good.
That should have given me. So two minutes before, so.
Well, we need the assessment system.
Yes. Questions?
These are all, this is a sample of intervention. But when you're discussing intervention, these are things outside of like the normal curriculum that target kids in need with support.
And frequency of that daily?
It's, um, Tuesday through Thursday, we have intervention or win time for forty-five minutes. Kindergarten is a little less. They're not quite ready for forty-five minutes. Yeah. Twenty, twenty-five. We work up to it.
Yeah, elementary level, secondary, you have five days a week. I mean, sort of a master schedule change for something, you know, happening at the school. It's every day of the week. You know, Monday's a little shorter, Tuesday through Friday are the normal sixty-minute periods-ish. So, yeah.
Does every school do the same? Win time, like with ninety-five percent in elementary, no matter if you're a title school or not? Correct. We have ninety-five percent and we have multiple resources from ninety-five percent. We have some that we use in the classrooms or whole group core lessons to make sure, like what you were talking about, to make sure that we're not missing anybody. But what we know about phonics and phonological awareness is that there are a lot of kids that will be able to hang, you know, stick with me as long as it's a part of everyday instruction. But in third grade, that stops. And so we want to make sure that we still have some supports in third, fourth and fifth grades so that students master these foundational skills.
And secondary, we were years ago seeing that if school had access, access to funds, you know, they might have something the others didn't, but we've leveled that. And the only difference would be that if, if a school can make it work, some, a school might add like an additional intervention section to a grade level, you know, if the staffing allows for it. But other than that, it's consistent at middle and high school.
Does it, is it physically, how is it physically done? Are they leaving their core classroom?
Yeah.
Can you talk about like what that looks like?
Yeah. So in, during win time, we use a walk to model. So students are, everyone is going to their group of what they need. So it's not like, you know, just four or five kids are being pulled out. We, everyone moves. So we would have typically four to seven instructors. And so the students would just move to their instructor's and stay in their classroom. But there's a lot of shifting going on. And because we use such a fluid system that students are used to, you know, maybe this week I'm with Ms. Dyckman, but next week I'm with Mrs. Den. And that's just how they're used to that. So they know that we're watching their progress and making decisions to move them. There's nothing worse than, you know, or the feeling of, you know, this is really hard for me and I'm going to be stuck here forever. So we want to show them that, you know, as you progress, we're going to move you through these different levels.
And how do you, how do you look at, because a lot of the reports that we get and some of the names have, you know, we break down by, you know, ethnicity, you know, different backgrounds. Classroom all stands up at the win time. Some kids are going here and some kids are going there. Like, are we paying attention to making sure that we're not putting groups together that like might make them feel othered or singled out?
Yes, we, we pay very close attention to what might be felt as, you know, we talk about what groups we might have been in. You know, the red group, we all knew what the red group meant or we all knew what the, I wanted. Steve was a buzzard. Doesn't, explains it. Do you try to make sure that students don't feel like they're always, we always go to this group or I'm always with this teacher? Yeah, we pay attention to that. We also have some systems in place for intervention in elementary that where we track data. And if we're not seeing the appropriate movement, we look at things like the instructor. Is it, do we need to change out instructors? Do we need to have a scenery change? You know, maybe the student's always been in this classroom, let's move them down the hall. So we do pay attention to that. Great question.
How does that work with secondary? So if it's seven in the afternoon, fourth, fifth, sixth or fifth, sixth, you have, are they headed to a classroom? Obviously it's secondary, middle and high school, it's all about movement.
Yeah, so, so like, I'll go like, so let's say the start of the day, your eighth graders come into school and they're immediately heading to like PE or computers or whatever. Like this is the class that's on the schedule. They go to the intervention for ELA or math class. And we try to keep the classes no larger than fifteen students. And some classes are able to be smaller than that. But you know, that fifteen is kind of around where, you know, it's, that's where it's stacked then. That's about where they end up. So then that goes on to, you know, next third and fourth period, same thing. Yes, those, you know, seventh graders, they're going to their elective class, you know, after second period, they'll go to their intervention and then sixth grade at the end of the day, like that schedule showed. Ideally, would be, you know, a perfect thing is if you've got Miss Den for your math in your core class, you've got Miss Den for your intervention class. It doesn't always work that way, you know, within the master schedule. But as much as we can do that, that's what we do. Or we get the kids with a teacher who's on like maybe the same team, you know. And, but again, can't always work, you know, perfect, but that's the idea right there. And then at the high school, the ELA, the intervention class that we have there, it is just a class on their schedule that they're going to throughout their school day.
Thank you.
Yep.
I got one more question.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm also a computer genius, right?
Yes.
So then, so when you're, when they're under a little computers, does the, does the instructor have ability to watch what they're doing on that computer?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
We saw you coming along.
I just have one, I'm wondering, when they're in the different groups, right? And you have them in different groups and they're flexible, what type of parent communication do you use? In terms of, you know, at what level, I guess, would you communicate with a parent? That's a really good question. It varies by school. We don't have a system, like a district directive. I know that the interventions, we have an intervention teacher at each elementary school and they work closely with the classroom teachers to give them the weekly data. So we, we collect weekly data on these types of activities and we also do oral reading fluency. And so those are communicated in a variety of ways, like newsletters and those kinds of things. We don't have, you know, like a sheet that goes home every Friday. We leave that up to the, the schools to decide. But there is an expectation that parents, there's no surprises. So.
Well, yes, and right now with the literacy plan.
So, oh, yes, great. Oh, so we use the comprehensive early literacy plan, which I won't know the law that it's attached to. But we, we inform parents. So we, we use AIMS Web and we get what's called a composite score. Each student takes a battery of tests. And we're looking, we're looking to inform parents of any students who are performing at or below the fiftieth percentile. So that we put a plan in place that shows what we're doing in the classroom, things like win and small groups and interventions like these. Then we also have a list of activities that would be helpful at home. So we're building that partnership with families, saying this is what we're going to do in the classroom. And with your help, we're going to get your student to the grade level expectation.
So that will go home or talked about, we talked about at conferences, which are coming up starting next week. And what we've found is also with kindergarten and first grade, many of our teachers just use it as a general tool, talking tool anyways, regardless of whether the child is at the fiftieth percentile or lower because it really is how we view our, what I need. And so it's important to communicate that to parents, what that might look like for them.
And Erin, if I can just real quickly touch from a secondary perspective, we also communicate with the families about a student being, you know, assigned to an intervention class. And I will say it runs up against a desire to have, you know, a child maybe in a band class or some other elective class. And so it does kind of, you know, you know, kind of run into that. And so I think like, you know, the, the principal, the teams do a really nice job of trying to, you know, explain the urgency and the importance and everything. But, but ultimately sometimes it comes down to a choice that a family does make. And, and that is a challenge for sure, so.
Any other question? We'll ask more tomorrow. We're very excited about that, by the way. Those of us there, I'm excited. Okay, thank you so much. This was really informative. We've been all ready for these kids. Any more discussion this evening? Maybe have any topics? No? All right, no. I see Mary over there. So we're going to head into open public meetings or executive session. At this time, action is not anticipated following the executive session. The purpose of this session is for discussion, discussing litigation and potential litigation. And we're estimating about forty-five minutes.